Can you let Mary in?
Yeah. They'll move very fast.
I don't understand. I don't understand that you're a young man, you shouldn't be tired at all.
Hi, it's Mary, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Super, thank you.
I know whoever sits there has to have whoever's on Zoom blaring over here, so.
Just like to sit away from the gambling.
Yeah.
You try.
All right, join in.
See my hands and stuff, but nobody can see me.
You remember how loud that was at that dirt road meeting?
Yes. Oh my God.
I felt so bad for Andy Sutton, it was like every time.
I almost missed you in that orange there.
Yeah, almost. So I figured it's something.
Somewhere, somewhere, always on the.
No Jeff, Jeff tonight?
No Jeff tonight.
He just got back from Maine, he drove all day since eight thirty this weekend, so.
Alright.
Didn't anticipate being so.
Yeah, likely.
Recording is on.
It's on everywhere.
Alright. Uh, meeting minutes. I have not read them.
I'm not sure, we're not really officially open yet, it's five twenty-eight.
Gives me two minutes. Did you email them? But they're also here.
Here, can you shoot me a text tonight when you decide about Wednesday, because I'm gonna be here tomorrow, because I'm cooking for C O A, so I'll follow along.
Yeah. I have, so here's the problem. I have to get Charlotte's basketball practice schedule, and that requires her getting it off of her computer, which I don't think I can get until we get back home tonight.
Yeah.
So probably won't be till like nine thirty-ish.
Sure, I just texted if I can or can't, and then I'll work with him tomorrow, we'll get it.
You definitely can't do Thursday, right?
She has a game Thursday in Ludlow that I gotta be at, I know. Can't wait till basketball's over, we're so close.
I was talking to her about doing it on Wednesday, right?
For her minute and thirty seconds of playing time.
You've got a head pull.
I had, yes, but I'm not, I'm better than I sound, I'm just stopping now. Alright. So open the meeting at five thirty. Motion approved, I would, what's the word I'm looking for? Take a motion to approve meeting minutes of December twelfth and nineteenth as we're in.
You don't have the nineteenth, babe. You should just the twelve.
Yeah. I made a motion. Minutes for December twelfth.
Second.
Favor.
I.
Eyes.
There you go, my friend. Uh, audience participation, public comment?
Recorded, right?
Do we want to skip ahead so that we can get Adam out of here?
Yeah, suggest move into, uh.
Actually, item F.
Yes.
Alright, Adam. Go on down. Wherever you like. Yeah. You're fancy, it's been a while.
Yeah, but I. Want to say a next.
There's a little part of you that is. Um, alright, so entertain a motion to appoint Adam Doby as interim fire chief. We don't have a time limit, I think we're just. Until.
So we had, we had talked about just one pay period, but I feel like it's probably gonna need to be a bit longer than that.
This is where we suck you in. Yeah, until.
If we find somebody good, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wow, I'm thinking, looking at somebody good.
Did you make that? You made that motion?
Not yet.
Yeah, you did.
I did?
Yeah.
Okay.
I seconded it.
Adam will be as the interim fire chief.
So, um, just so you know, I know you've talked to Christopher, you know where we're at, right? We have received the one, um, application. And he is.
We haven't actually, well, we received one application and they rescinded it. Uh, and then we had spoken with Chief Rinald from Russell.
I didn't realize, oh, I didn't understand that he rescinded it.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
So we have to repost.
Correct, yeah.
So there's also this sort of, the timing is, we've been talking about, um, looking to, um, regionalize this position. And we had originally talked about just looking with Chester, because Chester's fire chief has to retire, um, June, right?
Yep.
And, um, but then I guess there was some interest with Russell or and or Huntington, I don't want to say. Okay, so there might be more interest, um. And we thought, so that begins that sort of longer study of, like we did with the police. Um, you weren't here for that.
I wasn't.
How long did that take? Um. We started with the feasibility study, um, which we received a grant for, and that probably took a couple months. Um, it took a while, it was, I mean, it was pretty, it was smooth, because we were working with Chester, and it wasn't bumpy in that we both boards really were, um, willing to work together, and you know, both boards were really easygoing, we had a great couple of boards at the time, so it wasn't like chaotic or tense. Um, but I don't know if you add more boards to the mix, if that changes, I don't know what Huntington Russell's makeup is exactly right now. Um. So I don't know if that might take, it'll probably take longer with more. So I don't know, like, in the meantime, we can, we can post and look at hiring someone, um, for fire chief. But if that might again, we have to look at, we don't want to get in that position that we were with police, where we're like hiring, and then looking at like, well, now the job change isn't really for regional chief. You know what I mean?
So I'm fine with, so I can rearrange my schedule to support most of it, I talked about, of course, we're press like. Some office hours are probably a bit of a challenge.
Okay.
In my schedule, but I'm free your, um, weekends, so I could probably move them around a little. Dude, I, I just need to adjust them a little differently than what.
Okay.
And I've also got a fairly good support network of people in the department that can help us with a lot of the work of the two, so. Whatever you guys decide.
Okay.
I'll do it for as long as it's needed.
Okay.
As long as it doesn't come back, coming back here at. Tom Ackley. Saying I wish you'd find it non. And I just for preference, I didn't talk with the other officer.
Okay. Okay, that's good, good to know. Um, yeah, so that's kind of where we stand, it's gonna be, but I think that you'd be a huge help with us in the process of looking at the regional position, you know. Yeah. Yeah. So, and I guess, um, there are a couple other towns in the state that have done it, and we can take a look at their models and see, yeah, see how it works. Um. So, yeah, do you have any questions for us about?
There's a few like legitimate things.
Okay.
So, um, in looking at just like the way, um, Chief Motters. Email and stuff is set up.
Okay.
It's like, is emails. Dave Motters. We either need to change to like fire chief at a time of life or something like that, just for correspondence.
Yeah, I believe there are both, I think he just uses the modern one, but there is a fire chief.
So he's receiving the fire chief ones and responding maybe, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm more concerned about gaps and like people asking for permanent.
Yeah. Okay.
I went through the system for bringing comments with him today, so I'm good there.
Okay.
Uh, he did a pretty good handout sheet, which was great help. So I don't have that with him today. Um, and he's said that questions. I just talked to Chief Ackley, who's of course serious.
Cool, we knew he'd rope you back in.
Good.
I'm wishing you were more enthusiastic about.
It's not, so, um, yes, I'll do it, and I'm happy to do it, but I, it's not, uh. I'm never like, it's not like I. Desires to be fire chief. I'm also fine just.
Well, it's really helpful for us, we appreciate it. Um, because last time we ended up in this position, uh, as you know, with police, it wasn't a, it wasn't a. Good scenario. Mad news, so, there's that.
We're all set on the fire department side.
Yes, that's right, that's right, we're good. Yeah, so as long as you keep that on the. Cool. Right?
Well, we appreciate your stuff into the plate.
Alright. On favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's official. Oh, also, while you're here, that means that, um, St. Patrick's Day is just around the corner, and I really want to put together a committee for the St. Patrick's Day. So. Um, so just kind of think about that in the back of your head for a minute, because we.
We may send Patrick's Day parade or.
No, we are invited every year to march in the Holy York St. Patrick's Day Parade, and it's always kind of like this. And so, yeah, it's this relationship now, and, um, last year was fiasco with COVID and like fire kind of showed up. But I, we didn't know they showed up, and it was last minute, and so this year we're thinking, it'd be nice if we had like a kind of a committee of people that would like coordinate. So that would include fire and police and maybe some highway, see what we can do to just kind of like be a little more coordinated. Just a thought.
Uh, how about, um, the exit, you know, it's that who, but about the building status?
Um, so where that stands right now.
We're gonna talk about it tonight a little bit.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll wait unless, if you guys tell me that you need someone from the department or want someone from the department.
Yeah, no, I think we definitely will, we're.
Yeah.
We're still, we're gonna do the, um, we have a couple names of residents who have reached out and asked to be on the committee. Um, to be a part of that discussion, and then, um. Uh, it will be, my thought is that we will put it on the, um, town meeting. If we voted. Could Adam speak up, please? I can't hear him. He said, okay.
Drive that to you.
Um.
I wasn't talking at the moment, so that worked out.
And then, um, hopefully we'll have, you know, a good representation at the meeting, and more people will have the information that they need, and. We can move forward.
Uh, one other, uh, contacted, if I don't have this for the police chief.
Okay.
Yeah.
So at some point.
Absolutely. Cool. Welcome back on board.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not far. Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thanks.
Okay, I said hello.
So I have to like, like, saw my name.
Yup. Lot of kids with boogers and sneezing today.
Everyone is slow to set up.
I do. I do. Reduced amounts of patients lately. Alright, uh, highway department? You're next. How are you? You've been busy.
Yes. Yes. Put in roughly almost three hours overtime.
Wow.
Average system. For last week, everybody for like two days, ten to twelve hours.
Yeah. Yeah.
So anyway. I, um, Jeff asked me to look into the bridge.
Okay.
Was safe road.
Okay.
Is there a specific bridge, is there?
Are we talking about the leaking of the water?
The ones we spoke about, the rail guy, falling down, between the rails, he wanted to eat well himself.
I'm trying to think.
This is by Nybrook.
Uh, it's, it's down around the corner.
Around.
Down around the corner, okay, okay.
So, I did a little research, made a couple phone calls.
Mm-hmm.
And, um. I talked to, if he can do it, if these, um, state qualify.
So Jeff wants to weld the bridge?
Yes.
Does he have to be sort of?
Yes, he does.
Okay.
Um, maybe, or he can just do it himself. And probably the first town in the area, um, his name added to it, because it'd be his bridge, and you own it, and be all the responsibility.
I'm super confused, I, how much did I mention? Jeff wants to.
Yes.
Name a bridge after himself.
Yeah, with all, with all respect to Jeff, I don't think we need to belabor this point, he's not going to be welding a town. So.
Water Rail Solutions to repair them. Um. Was, um, seven thousand dollars.
Okay.
But I can't use Jeff and I down.
Oh, okay.
On that. So anyway, that's done. Um. Christopher, I were talking about the other day, a while ago, a month. It was like a while ago. Last week or this week. Um, I suggested that the town would, um, just start a road account. For, when you know. Bridge deep, bridge work, road repairs, and so on and so forth, and probably the possibility of using for, um, any for, um. Zines.
Okay.
Okay.
So this is separate then?
He's talking about something more like a stabilization account, specifically for those kind of bigger capital projects associated with the road system.
Okay.
Because, um, Chip and Manuel, Manuel ain't go so far. On that. Plus, it'd be really nice to have, remember? A year ago in June, July, we had all the wa, all the water and gas issues. Um, a lot of towns went broke over that.
Yeah.
I know, I know that Chester almost, they're almost a million dollars. And then to recruit probably maybe three or four hundred thousand dollars out of it, and there's still need repairs and fixes on the roads. Um, that's another reason also for that.
Okay.
How it comes or where the money comes from, that's all up to you.
Hmm.
You know.
So we would put money in it every year in annuals, how many? And then when you wanted to spend money out of it, we would have to go to a meeting first.
Um, you could write that out how you wanted to, you could have it as the select board determines what it's used for, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to look at the structure with town council, usually for stabilization fund, you need to go back to a town meeting at two thirds.
I think that could get messy.
Yeah.
I think it would be, if there's an easier way to do it, where we're not having every time, like if you have a project.
Well, obviously, the nice thing about your operating budget is you do have the new road repair running in there, and you can just do that whenever you need to.
Yeah.
Once it's appropriated at town meeting. Um, but, so we could, I mean, we can certainly look at what other towns do in terms of these.
Yeah.
Yeah, because in all. You need five hundred thousand dollars, you know, for repairs, I mean, I, I.
Yeah.
We do, we do have, uh, like a road repair account.
Yeah.
We as a town.
Yes.
Yep, alright, and so. How, how much of a jump is it to put a financial figure into this road repair or making an account?
It would be, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be coming out of my account, it'd be, um, another talented account.
He's talking about some kind of capital projects account that is separate from your annual operating budget. And would be, you know, replenished or through free cash transfer or something like that.
So that's where I'm from, yes. And, and because this town just loves to spend money, you know? I mean, it's their passion, so if we can.
I don't know about that.
Uh, I'm just trying to think of an easier way that we can, you know, have, have the account fund of the money without.
Oh, you're without the meeting, yeah?
Yeah.
We would just have to look at what type of account.
I think, you know, I think all this, it's a good thought, um, you know, we are in the process of developing this capital improvement plan with the Collins Center. Um, so I think part of that is gonna be looking at, okay, here's all the different road projects we see coming up.
Mm-hmm.
And then they'll help us think through whether or not some of these things are, can be paid for out of part of your operating budget, or your debt, or, you know. So we'll identify those funding sources, and if it turns out, you know, when we're talking to them, hey, it would be a good idea actually to have a dedicated stabilization fund for this stuff, then we can. Yeah, yeah.
Every year, they, you know. You start off, if you start off small, it only depends on how big your, your free cash. Start out with a hundred thousand, two hundred, whatever it is, you know, then gradually work up to.
Yeah.
To a limit.
It would nice, it'd be nice to have a sales, not for sure. Alright, cool, I like that. Okay.
There were really no issues for the last, oh, one or four weeks. Snow and ice and all that.
Yeah.
We have a tree down over on Chester, on Chester Road today.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and I got ahold of, uh, Kristen from.
Yes.
Superintendent.
Great.
Informed her that, uh, that's a whole other lot.
That's great, yeah. My daughters appreciated that. My daughters. No.
Uh, that's, that's all I've got, really.
Good, I haven't heard me anything from the grapevine about roads or anything, and they seem like they were in good shape, did you hear complaints?
Oh, I get them all the time, I'm a good guy. Talked about it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's nothing major.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a little.
Yeah.
Questions.
Okay.
That's all.
And all equipment's holding up good.
So far, so good.
Okay, yes.
And we're looking to go with salt and sand?
Yeah, I just spent twenty-five.
Okay. Alright, sounds good.
Yes, yes, and I think we got a break for at least a week now.
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking.
I've, I've, I've had a couple guys roll with a chipper, and started chipping up some of the stuff that's on the side of it.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Great.
Anything else?
Thank you, no, I think we're good. You're good?
I'm good, okay.
Thank you for coming in.
You're welcome, and I'm, I'm gone.
Have a good night.
I'll be good, Bob.
I hear ya. Hey.
So we wanna skip ahead, because, uh, Tim just got here.
Alright, so, uh, motion to go to action item E, uh, review and action application of Kim Burgland to be appointed as a member of zoning. Very good. Alright, uh, TJ, second that?
I second it.
On favor? Come on down.
Is there anybody on the phone?
Ah, good question. Um. Okay, so zoning.
As of, as of January fifteenth, no. Uh, I think Jim retired as of, or resigned as of January first, and then Don did fifteenth, and.
You will be the first volunteer. Congratulations.
Purge.
That makes you the chair.
I made it very clear. That I cannot be checked.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, well.
So I will basically be waiting for somebody else.
Yeah.
Right.
And feel free to spread the word that people are needed.
So some of the CBA kind of circle.
Yeah. Yes.
So.
I, we kind of saw this coming, I think, with the zoning board kind of was aging out, we haven't had much interest for a while, and, you know, same people kept, um, re-upping.
And, and I reached out to Donnie, and Donnie said, you know. If the new board has any questions or needs advice or anything, you'd be glad to help.
In the meantime, so if there's any issue comes up. How I should probably go, even though there's no CBA.
Well, right now, if you're looking at the CBA until.
Yeah, until.
So, you know, we would appreciate you being here.
Yes.
How do I find that, so?
You can, you can talk to me, because on, on the website right now, it says to contact me if there's a CBA issue.
Okay.
Um, and so I'll let you know, and we'll handle it at our next select board meeting.
Okay.
Until you get a friend, and then.
Okay, so. Anything I have to do?
Um, we have to make a motion to appoint, uh, Kim Burgland as member of zoning board of appeals, is there a term that we need to do?
Should be under.
It should.
It just.
You have to sign something, the date should be.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, a term from January twenty-six, twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty-four. Hi, um, is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need to see the town clerk, Kim? Just, just where you in, and you don't do it at this, just.
Thank you, we really appreciate it, I'll keep asking around too.
So. Till twenty twenty-four.
Till twenty twenty-four. So many people are so eager today to be appointed to positions. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Alright, do we want to back up to, um?
I didn't find it, but.
So town administrators?
Yeah, I would, um, I would suggest we move to item three B. Three, I guess, which is the Water Department Historical Society bill.
Okay.
Um, because I see Chips is in the audience, Chips, I don't know if you want to come up and speak to it?
Hey Chips.
I'll pretend to make a motion.
I.
Yeah, thank you.
Bring notes that by, probably mid-February, our new bathroom.
I, I'm seeing all the work going on up there, that's great.
Rough running.
Excellent.
Nicely, no, no cost to the time.
That's great.
Great.
I can't wait to see it, that's awesome.
It's almost over, people can't wait to use it.
If you have questions about my letter here, it, uh, we were paying full freight up at the, at the White Church, because we own it.
Yeah.
And, uh, it probably ought to be in for an abatement, because the water's turned off for half of the year. But, uh, we haven't, we've never done that.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we probably have maybe a hundred flushes, uh, in the course of the whole year that, uh, happens up there, but anyway. And, uh, so, and, uh, our police says that we are going to be, we, we, uh, to the, the Historical Society. Says that we, uh, we will be responsible for taking care of the building.
Mm-hmm.
Which we have done. Our stewardship includes a new roof and, uh, new windows and new exterior doors, and, and now a, a new bathroom, all through no cost to the town.
So the White Church was sent a water bill?
We, we get a water bill every, yeah, we pay.
Okay.
Four quarters every year.
And so you're looking to abate one quarter, is that?
No, I'm not, I, we're not talking about abatement at the minute, that's.
So the Historical Society received a.
Yeah, I see that here. Thank you.
Bill for the Historical Society building.
Oh.
It's a brand new thing, we've never paid water bill with there. And that's, that's, that's the problem.
I feel like this has come up before, and it's like comes out of, we, at one point, we had like a town water account.
So, so, yeah, so.
That's a different, but.
Yeah.
We've never.
So I can't speak to, you know, why the Historical Society doesn't pay for water.
Yeah.
Um. Gordon, I know, took it upon himself with Karen's help to identify any properties that were not paying for water.
Got it, okay.
Most of them were residents, but this was, the Historical Society building was one property.
Okay.
And so they sent you a bill. Um, so my suggestion, and, you know, we can discuss this, is for the town to take on the Historical Society water bill for the moment.
Yeah.
And once water actually moves to a usage-based system, then we can talk about, you know, changing it up then. Because I mentioned to you, Chips, this morning, your water bill will be very small at that time, and so.
Yeah.
Well, we went, we went through this a couple years ago with the new cemetery building.
Mm-hmm.
And we were getting, you know, a bill for the water, but it's part of the town, so it went finally taken over by the town.
The library also.
Yeah.
We, we've never paid a water bill, ever.
Right, we have a town water bill account.
Yeah.
What I'm, what I'm suggesting is in. What I'm, what I'm suggesting is in the long term, once we get to a place where people are being charged based on usage. It'll make sense for individual buildings to pay their own way.
And to build it into their budget.
Because then there's actually a reason for them to conserve water and not. Right now, it doesn't make any sense. Of course, we're going to pick it up because there's nothing they can do to lower their bills.
Budget, then uh, our, our, that's really, uh, our private budget, which is a different story.
Yeah, so that's what the difference is. So that's what my next question was. The Historical Society is not a municipal building. Is that correct?
No, no, it's a town, it's a town owner.
It is a town building.
We have a lease with them for ninety.
Ninety nine year lease.
Okay.
Halfway through, so. And the lease says that we, we take care of the upkeep of the building. Not, not paying for, and we do, we obviously pay.
Yeah.
Pay the gas bill and the heating bill as part of the upkeep, but.
Okay.
Do you pay the electric or is that? Yeah, we pay, you know, we did the electric when we paid it.
Okay.
We pay the, uh.
Okay, so, so yeah, so the town, I definitely agree, the town will, will pick that up and then, um. Going forward, it sounds like it's a bigger discussion for us when we are not billing straight out, but when we are going to usage. Usage, it sounds like it'll be a bigger discussion for all of these buildings.
Right.
Um, so we can definitely.
Then if we may, uh, that's when we, we would probably abate the part of the church bill.
Sure, yeah.
Not always a small usage, but there's no usage for.
Yeah. And as far as I remember, the abatement, the part that you abate isn't, there's the two portions of the bill, correct? And you're abating just the usage. Yeah.
In the flat rate.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't know how, how it's gonna work out under the new system, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, to be seen later down the road.
Yes, but for now, we're, we're good with that. Sounds good.
On we go.
Do we need a vote on that or no? No, that was just a, okay.
That was a non-action. Water department know that the bill is not going to be paid.
Okay, thank you, Chips.
Yeah, well, I'll talk to Gordon.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chip.
Thank you.
Take care.
You too. Alright, let's back on up to town administrator budget finance.
Yeah, uh, so really quick, uh, so we started our FY twenty four budget hearings this week, uh, we had, um. We have planning board, uh, who else was there? Fire chief, because we had to fit him in before he left. Uh, which by the way, sorry to see him go.
I know.
This morning, I didn't have no expectation for him to.
Oh, despite today's the twenty sixth, I didn't even think of that.
The cemetery couldn't meet.
Yeah, right, cemetery couldn't meet. So yeah, anyway, we, we had a number of departments come before our finance committee. Um, we've got additional meetings scheduled for next week, so hoping to get through all of these budget requests. Early so that we can focus on, um, contracts with accounting and treasurer collector, which will be major parts of the budget.
Okay.
Um, and then, you know, school budget and vocational school pieces that come later on in the year.
And that school budget, we may be seeing a difference with the para. I have, have you heard any word on how the, um?
I, so I spoke to, to, um.
Terry?
To, to Kristen.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I haven't spoken to Terry. I spoke to Kristen. She is gonna come out at some point to report to the finance committee about what. You know, things are looking.
What's going on, okay. Um, I talked to Terry just in the library and, um. Let her know that we had had the conversation with Kristen about the, we were aware that there was the negotiation going on for parent. There was probably going to be an increase there. Um, obviously with the regional contract, it's not just us. That has to be okay with that. It's, you know, all the towns, but. So we are going to see a bit, and I mean, there's really not much we can do about it. The paras need a living wage.
Right.
And they're very much needed, so.
Right, well, uh, you know, this is part of why we, we voted an education stabilization fund.
Yeah, so we do have a little bit of a.
We'll see, yeah, we'll see what comes down the pipe and be able to address it that way, hopefully. Um, so yeah, that's the update on the budget process at the moment, uh, in terms of the efficiency and regionalization grants for the shared water op- operator. Had a very productive meeting last week.
Wow.
We broke through.
Good.
Um, and now, so the focus is going to be on taking Steven, who's already with the Blanford Water Department. Um, and having him kind of, uh, go back and forth between Chester and Blanford. And basically. Part of the benefit there is that he is, I, I can never keep all the licenses straight, but he essentially needs more hours to get.
Oh, great.
Um, so that could be a potential win-win for both towns. And then additionally. Um, and this is kind of the best thing that's come out of this so far is this pipeline that Gateway has now for students to become water operators. So I missed it, but earlier this week, they had a visit to the Westfields, uh, water treatment plant.
Cool.
Um, and there's more meetings coming. It sounds like we got a, a good group of kids who are going to be.
Awesome. I love that.
So they're going to be helping Gordon out, literally doing everything from like mowing the lawn to, you know. Learning which knobs do which things. And at the end of it, we should have some kids who, who have a leg up in terms of becoming water operators and the. Hope is that that can become like a tool to draw applicants from.
That's really exciting.
Yeah, so it could be really cool, so.
Cool, good work.
So, yeah, and thank Gordon for that because he, I know he's the one who's dealing with those kids and he's. Uh, he sounds like he's going to be a tough but fair teacher.
Yeah, that's good. We need the same program, but in like the field of, um, EMT paramedics for the Hilltown.
Or like everything.
Yeah, seriously, like. Right?
Try hiring a fire chief and. Anyway, um, real quick update on the Bay State, uh, grant for elders. So we got another computer training coming up next week. Um, so that'll be at five PM in this room.
Cool.
Uh, I.
It was well attended last time.
It was. I hoping, I haven't heard back from as many people this time. George Reichart, but not many others, so.
And this is the same guy who's gonna, um, teach it.
Yes, Mike, Mike will be teaching it and, uh, Steve and Mike will be here to kind of help out, make sure. Uh, five PM next Monday, this coming Monday.
Check it out, it's a good one.
Uh, we already addressed the fire chief situation, treasurer collector situation, um, we had five applicants for the assistant treasurer collector slash. Maybe someday treasurer collector position. Uh, three of them met our minimum requirements and so we started interviews today. Uh, the screening committee is going to finish out on Monday, um, and so that's why we were looking to push next week's like board meeting a little bit.
Okay.
Um, because we are hoping at, uh, the end of the day on Monday, we'll have two candidates that we can recommend to the select board for final interviews. Um, so we're making progress on that.
That's great.
Yeah. Uh, and then real quick, just legislative update. So, uh, last week was bill filing week, uh, in the legislature. Uh, Rep. Vigo's office filed three bills for us, so they filed one, uh, that has to do with Cabo Mountain Road. Reopening it for pedestrian, equestrian and bicycle traffic.
Wow.
And then more, so I'll get everyone a copy of that. Uh, and then he also filed our volunteer firefighter tax break bills. That was a nice kind of parting gift to the chief, I think. Uh, and then we've got legislation that Mary and I have been working on to validate all of our actions at town meeting, et cetera, so.
That's great.
So, yeah, so that was, uh, that was nice of them to take that on. Uh, and then real quick, so the fire highway facility, um, next steps. So I feel like now that we at least have an interim chief, we can kind of. Jump back into this. Um, you know, my thinking here is, and we've got, I think, five people out there I've heard from so far who are interested in being on some kind of committee. I'm not sure we want to make it part of the existing kind of building committee. I don't know if it should be kind of a subcommittee or what. Um, but to me, we got to keep it relatively straightforward and say. The objective of this committee is to decide or make a recommendation really to the select board about whether or not. Uh, we should move forward with the current, uh, OPM, that plan. Or not spend that or let that hundred twenty thousand dollars go and move forward with some other plan. Um, I think. It's a, yeah.
I'm just nervous about putting that decision in the hands of five people.
Well, I think again, that's why I backed away from the word decision. But I think there has to be some kind of goal at the end of.
Yes, I agree. There has to be an objective. My, Mike's sort of thoughts on it were that these people were going to. They wanted to be a part of the process to gain more knowledge on the ins and outs of. The guidelines that we were having to work within, right?
Yeah, well, I think that's going to be a big part of it, um.
But I guess the other side of that is them sharing their questions and concerns with.
Sure.
I think as many building committees that I've been on. The priority should be first, they have to be, oh, whoever. You know, uh, want to be on the committee or I'm served the committee, they have to be aware of what the state requirements are.
Right.
Alright, I mean, uh, I wasn't at the meeting. You know, when we had the regular meeting there, but, uh. There was a lot of nonsense in guessing and this, that and the other thing, and the state is very.
Yeah.
Specific on what is required for these buildings and what. And I've heard a lot from a variety of people, although we don't need this, we don't need that. Well, that's, that's a lot of horse hockey, that's guessing. You know, so whoever is on this committee has to be educated. To what the ground rules are that they have to work or the perimeter that they have to work in.
Right, so I, I will say, so our current OPM has reached out and. You know, wanted to know, you know, what are the next steps the town wants to take? Um, do we need some more outreach to the public? I don't know if there's an opportunity here to just set up some kind of Q and A with them or something where residents can learn a little bit more.
Well, I, that would be a, a no-brainer to do. You'd have to do that. Because I was on the committee that selected them and I'm telling you, they, they're top-notch people.
Yeah.
You know.
So I guess the question is, how do we get enough people to attend a Q and A? Yeah, so that it, like, and so the only way we got as many people to that meeting as we did. Was because they were angry about a possible outcome.
Right.
So how do we get them to meeting without that, right? How do you get so, how do you get that many people worked up about something to want to show up and be a part of something and ask questions? Or is it a zoo?
The thing is, is what happened at the lunch meeting, it was word of mouth. And that got rumors going and, yeah, I mean, I got a couple calling, what the hell are you talking about?
Yeah.
No, that's not true. And, uh, I think so, whatever, whatever we're gonna do, we have to put it straightforward. So that everybody understands that these, these are the things that are going to be discussed. And anybody tells you different, then don't bother coming because we're here to do something positive. You know, uh. I mean, if, when I first moved to town. Uh, I was here about five years when we had the first, uh, meeting on a new, uh, firehouse. And, uh. We had an architect that was on the meeting at the time and he designed the building and everything and it went straightforward. Everybody was right on ball. The whole thing, turnkey, was just under four hundred thousand dollars. And, and this was a four bayed building and then the town said, no, it's too much money. So, you know, it keeps going up. You understand that.
I did speak with a woman, um, from Goshen at the, um. The Mass Municipal Conference in Boston the other day. And, um, so she got up actually and she spoke to Kim Driscoll, the Lieutenant Governor, is that right? Um, who is amazing, by the way. She's like my new hero, love her. Um, but anyways, this woman from Goshen got up and she was talking about the highway department in Goshen. It was the same exact situation that we're having with our water department. Um, so I don't know if it's worth like having a discussion with them. It was, I mean, it was like, she was like, it's two and a half million, which is probably a low.
Sorry, with the water department or with?
With their highway department. She's like, it's two and a half million dollars. Our budget's five hun- five million. How the heck are we going to afford this? No one wants to put the money and. It was the, like, the exact same scenario.
Yeah.
Um, and I just think it's interesting, it's an, it's just a larger, interesting conversation to have, um. But as far as the committee goes, I agree. We need to have an objective. We need to be careful about the way that we word the objective because I don't want it to be. Uh, any sort of decision that lies in their hands. I still want to be able to go to town meeting.
Right.
Right, and have this vote. I would, I think, what is our goal of, so our goal of this, these people being able to participate in this conversation. I guess selfishly, my goal was for them to learn about why we need to say yes, so. I have to like back up a little from that and say like, what else is the goal?
I would say where I'm coming from is just that I look at, for example, Williamsburg, which just had a new public safety complex that they moved forward with. You know, they've been very fortunate in that I think a bunch of, um, bids came in lower than expected and so they've been able to move forward with it. Um, they had a building committee that was a dozen people or something. And so now obviously it's a bigger community. Um, and it's a different community. But it, but it's, the, the tough thing for me is saying, yeah, we had an open process, but we have, we had a committee that was three people and. They're all within departments, right?
Yeah.
So, and it's not, I, I don't think that was like the intention necessarily, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's, so I'm just trying to figure out a way to be a little.
So why don't we open up the meetings to, so going forward, the, the, um, building committee meetings are. Zoom, but they are the type of Zoom where people cannot comment because I think you then open up to creating, you know, five hour long meeting.
Yeah.
But you open it up where it's Zoom and you can listen. You're welcome to listen.
Well, and the other thing I've heard is time of day and, and posting and doing all that stuff. And that's, that's easy, like, we can address that.
We can address that and if we're, if we open it up to Zoom and people can listen in. Then it can be on YouTube and they can watch it later if they want, if they want to gather more information and the facts.
Yeah.
Um, so I mean, that's one way to help with transparency.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. The, uh. I, I think like Chris was, is right, um, having a three-person panel or something like that, uh. You have to have a couple of late people in there, you know, so, so a panel of five.
Yeah, so, so maybe we talk.
I wouldn't go much bigger than that.
So then maybe we talk about, are there two residents from the ones we've heard from who, who we would add to the committee?
Yeah.
Do you want to try to write up an objective and we can take a look at it next week and see?
I mean, I, I kind of wrote one up, but it sounds like we're going a little different.
Yeah.
So that's, that's completely fine. Let me kind of. Put something together that lays out what the structure would be, you know, what we're trying to do going forward.
Yeah.
And then we can pull in the current OPM so that it's, they, they understand what we're trying to do.
Okay.
Um, does that make sense? I'll try to present something that.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Alright, uh, really quick, uh, because I know Kara, you've got to leave. Uh, Buffalo update, uh, so for sites, their contractor is meeting with the Conservation Commission at seven tonight and actually I'll be. Stepping next door for that.
Okay.
Um, they've been working through some issues around.
Yeah.
Uh, tree removal at the site, um, but it sounds like. Um, the Department of Environmental Protection is kind of working with both parties to figure out, you know, what is. The correct interpretation of the Wetlands Protection Act that they can all.
Okay.
So more to come on that. Uh, and then ambulance service, uh, I just wanted to mention Hilltown Community Ambulance Association is having their meeting tonight. I was hoping to be at it, but based on scheduling, it just didn't work out.
Are they regional? Is that, like, when we were at that meeting, the regional, um?
Yeah, I mean, they have six communities.
So.
Profit. So it's kind of a.
So the situation that they did in the one we were listening to, they had like, the town had their own ambulance and then smaller towns linked into that.
That was, yeah, what I remember hearing was and imagining was, oh, so people at, like, Lands End would be on the same ambulance service as Otis. And people who are.
Oh, because they split the town.
I think that they split up the town by different sections.
But then I was trying to think, well, we don't really have a hospital that's quicker that way.
Right, it was, it kind of sounded like it was not maybe the right fit for us.
No, but I thought it was interesting that what they did was kind of like absorb onto another town, but we don't really have anyone close enough, like Westfield would be, and I don't know.
Right.
I mean, Springfield would be more ideal, but they don't have, we're there too far.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I can tell you, it's a chief moderator before heading out the door, sent me some suggestions about, you know, if we were to do. An RFP or anything for this, what to include. Um, you know, it's, I, I, I will say, like, looking around, it's. It's tough for me to imagine that we get a lot of bids back that are cheaper or better. Um, are, you know, be, just because of the geography.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, if we want to continue looking at that, we can.
Okay.
Um.
I think it's important, but it's sort of like over here with the, the.
I will say, it's, it's also just challenging because ideally, right, you'd want to go out to bid with some other towns potentially.
Yeah.
Um, and some of these towns just don't pick up the phone.
Yeah.
And some of these towns are happy with the service they have and, you know, so they don't want to be part of it, so.
When Paul was sick, they were there. It took a little bit, you know, fifteen minutes maybe.
Yeah.
The police were there and they were attending to him, so.
That's good, yeah.
You know, while they were getting him ready. Getting him ready.
Yeah.
Ambulance came and.
That's great.
Yeah. He was happy, said everything was great in the ambulance. They gave him. Got made uncomfortable immediately, so.
Yeah, I think the other sort of part. That that one thing we've discussed um and just haven't followed through with is uh offering more CPR first aid classes to residents. Um. We discussed it a while ago and then sort of dropped it, but I think I'm I'm sure that there's. People who would offer time, um I know that there's grants out there. We did get the machine here. We have the. We don't have it, you're saying now? Oh, yeah, we should.
Yeah, and and they came out with a new one now. That you. You know, they're not. So the heavy duty things. Like when I had my heart attack, they they had these pads that they put on. And they sense when the heart.
Yeah.
Going to percolate or whatever. And it's very low voltage that just kinda, you just kinda feel a little tingle. And you know, a little tickle and and. You know, the tickle of my heart.
Yeah.
But anyhow, uh you know, and they they have this new thing coming out and and it's out now and. Uh you know, it will replace each others.
So there's probably, I would imagine like last time I did CPR and first aid training, they trained me how to use one of those. So. The more people you have certified and trained, the better, obviously. And so if we could just sort of a town movement to to get more people certified, I think it would be great.
Yeah, it's a good thought. I know with that one, I think the chief said. He was having, so there were supply chain issues with the batteries or something, so.
And they, even if we're offering classes here and we're able to like. Offer it for reduced fee, you know, you can get certified for the price because it does cost money, I mean.
Yeah.
Something, it would be. Would, and even if we're doing like all of the town employees.
There are brands for that thing.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, you know, yeah. Yeah, so something to look into, definitely. Um, all right, I think uh I think that's.
That's it.
For for me, and then we've got a few action items.
All right, we're gonna act on fiscal twenty twenty three fourteen warrant, so I've got. Something here for Pioneer Valley Planning, one of those bills that we get.
That's not on the agenda, just, you know.
Okay, this day is the twenty sixth. There's that.
Pioneer Valley, um can you tell me what those are for? Because I don't even know, Kara.
Um.
Number nineteen.
Yeah, I'll read.
Teen invoices must be uh working off some grant that they got a long time ago.
Yeah, it, I'll read it in a second. Um, oh, this is the, you need us to sign the alcoholic beverage thing or this is all set? No.
Just the cover letter, Kara. You've signed everything, but the report has to be sent in.
Okay.
That's it.
The, this is the um Lanford Community Development Program. And this is a portion of the money from Mass Department of Housing and Community Development for Pioneer Valley Planning Labor. It's um six hundred and nine dollars. And then con- cons- consultants and subcontractors. So this is for, I believe it's the. When they are doing the stuff for people's homes. Renovation.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I have the board signed, I send it back to them.
Right, yeah. Yeah, this is for the Community Development.
Yeah.
Grant, right, okay.
All right, so motion to approve the warrant fourteen. For a second?
Second.
On favor?
I.
Uh Pioneer Valley Cleaning provide technical assistance. With Efficiency and Regionalization Grant for Blanford Chester Shared, so we need to.
Yes, so this is, this is part of the grant we already received for.
Yeah.
Uh that that project and it's just that uh they have need, PVPC needs a separate contract to actually do the continued facilitation of the.
And this money comes out of that.
It comes out of that grant. It's already paid for.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So I'd make a motion to approve the um.
Efficiently regulation.
Yeah, that one.
Okay. Uh I make the motion to.
Uh second discussion?
Second.
On favor?
I.
Hi.
Good.
Um, all right, now we've got the wellness grant, healthy snacks.
So we're doing this again this year.
Nice.
And Maya reached out and was like, you guys wanna do this again?
Yeah. How much food? Five thousand? So many snacks. It's fantastic.
So, yeah, so we just need uh a couple of signatures and an okay and go after it.
So motion to approve the application for the MIA Wellness Grant for Healthy Snacks.
Second.
Discussion. On favor?
I.
I. Um, application for district local technical assistance funds, um.
Yes, here, I'll just, I'll cut you off cuz they, they extended the deadline on this.
Okay.
Um, I have been working with PVPC to see. Um, you know, what kinds of things we should be applying for here. So there's at least three, possibly four things.
Okay.
Um, so one, and this is kind of a no brainer, is for them to work with us to uh to create some permitting flow charts. So that way, when a resident goes to our website or anything like that, and just to figure out how, who to go to for. That's that they have it. Um, so that's an easy one. Uh another thing that's come up is we are potentially switching municipal finance softwares. Uh software. Um, so we're looking at maybe a few other towns who wanna do that as well during a regional RFP, so we'll see.
So wait on that, table that one?
Table that one.
Okay.
Yep.
What are we doing?
D under action items.
D, um did you, is this, did you want?
Kara's telling me to be quiet, so.
No, I wouldn't tell you the time.
Uh wait, sorry, what's this? Oh, yeah, this carriage needs to sign up. And then, sorry, the last thing, I'll just, I can't help myself. The conservation uh and zoning, uh some kind of shared position. Um, so this is something we talked about in the past. I reached out to PVPC to see if this is something that they could provide, where similar to what we do with planning, they have a staff member who's just.
Oh, like. Hiding, are we talking about doing minutes and stuff or more than that?
More than that. Um, so conservation wants a conservation agent.
Okay.
Um, somebody who can help them file state paperwork.
Um, yeah.
You know, kind of start planning for how to better use the conservation properties we have. The zoning piece. I've seen some other communities with zoning administrators and I was just wondering if it's something that if we had, it would kind of make serving on the ZBA less painful. It's realistic because not a lot of towns our size have that, but so anyway, it's something that we could apply for for PVPC. And they would see, hey, does this make sense for us? Of course, they already provide planning services to us.
Um, yeah, zoning does seem like a lot and there's a knowledge there that.
Yeah.
For free, like, it's just, you know what I mean? Like, people that volunteer to do it.
It's a lot. And then the other thing is you're making decisions that impact your neighbors and it's uncomfortable. So anyway, so those are my kind of uh things that I've been chatting with them about.
That's great.
And deadline's been extended, so we'll submit application a bit later. Um, one last thing is they also, we did this morning in discussions with Eric from PVPC, broached the whole shared. Fire chief idea, regionalized fire chief idea. Um, he said, oh, yeah, we could look at that. Uh they've said they've done it in the past and it's very sensitive and difficult.
Yeah.
Um, as you can imagine, so.
Yes.
But I'm gonna reach out to Chester um and Huntington and to see, hey, is this given where we're at with all of our chiefs uh in that we.
It seems like it's a good opportunity.
It seems like. So. That's another thing that could potentially be funded through DLP, so. So basically, a lot of grants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, we can't get a lot of grants to build a fire department on Highway.
Well, there are some, but no, no one wanted to hear about them.
Well, well, I I think too, if if we don't have a number, you can't apply for a grant.
Yeah, no, we need to take the next step.
No, those, I mean, those big projects, it's always. Why, yeah, no, it's a lot of moving pieces.
All right, anything, I'm trying to think if there's anything to report from else from the conference.
That was good.
It was good, it was valuable. It was shorter than the ones I've been to in the past. There really wasn't much on Saturday going on that would affect the Lanford. It was all kind of like bigger things.
Yeah, I wish, I kinda wish I had like come. Maybe next year I'll skip the morning on Friday. Not, it was cool seeing like Michelle Wu and like all those people, but then I also.
Yeah, she's awesome. Yeah.
There are some of the, there were some workshops on Saturday that's like, oh, it would be good to go to, but.
Yeah.
Anyway.
The second one I went to on, um. It was basically about like communicating with the public and getting information out there and how do you do that successfully and this like. It was really interesting. The three people that spoke, one woman was from Needham and she was a former news reporter and she's now their communication director for Needham. And she has had a lot of success with a weekly email newsletter. She said that she's got like a seventy percent open rate and like a. Thirty percent click rate on the links that she puts in there. Um. You know what? They they were what? I mean, there was a lot of humor to it because it is, you know, you know, where people are talking about what's your frustration? And just the negativity like of trying to run a social media account for a town is like almost, you know, unbearable.
Yeah.
And um so I had a lot of questions there. It seems like it's still one of the best ways to get information out, but like it had me thinking. We don't have town social media accounts, like we've steered away from that because of the negativity and stress we've dealt with, but like. Do we wanna go in that direction and have someone manage it? I don't know.
Is it, do you have to allow people to, can it just be for information is what I'm watching?
Yeah, like.
You can comment, but this is for your information. If you have questions about this, you have to go to.
Yeah, maybe that's it. Maybe you just leave comments off for anything that you put on. I don't know.
People do that and won't allow you, um some of the the new stuff, uh personal. Small people.
Yeah.
Alan Clifton, I like to, I like to read about him and he doesn't wanna hear from me.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's okay.
Yeah.
So.
So I'll say in my, in my previous life, you know, so the firm I worked for in Rochester, we would do a lot of this where we would uh come into a community. They would want help promoting a project or something through Facebook. We would kind of take over their Facebook for a bit and kind of use it.
Okay.
The challenge I have seen is that Facebook like intentionally changes up the everything so frequently.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's kind of. You you kind of need like a social media coordinator.
Yeah.
And I don't think we wanna. But I I do kind of wonder if. You know, I've been resistant to posting too much stuff in that kind of community forum that already exists because there is just a lot of negativity and misinformation.
It's messy.
But. But people go there.
People go there. And so for, you know.
Yeah.
When we started a Facebook page, I started a People Who Love Blanford page, I don't know, ten years ago, when. We had a consultant actually come into town beca- and through this workshop, we identified that communication was. A major downfall of Blanford. At the time, we were like in this spiral. And so. We, so we, one of the things was I started the Facebook page and then together, we had a group of people who we were editing and producing. Newsletters, every like paper newsletters that went out to every person. The Blanford Bugle. Quarterly, which just became a, it was wonderful, but became a ton of work for us. We were just, I mean, we were volunteering our time to edit a newspaper. It was crazy. Um. The social media. It was.
Yeah.
It was unhealthy. It was unhealthy and that's where I walked away like from all of it. But it was super helpful because we were, you know, people did see that. They didn't know that things were going on. There were pictures posted. There were. Maps, you know, it it's so wonderful as far as place to get information, but it's just. I don't know how you do it in a healthy way. I haven't quite grasped it.
When you wanna say anything, any, any little thing.
Yes.
I mean, I've certainly thought about just like posting a link on there saying like, here's our town newsletter, sign up and so that I can get some more people.
Yeah.
Aware of it because there's definitely people who just don't even know it's exists.
Yeah.
And I don't know.
And and there's a lot of people too, like. On on our webpage, you know, they they look at it, they look for something that they're they're looking for. Like a fire burner permit or something like that, and they don't bother with the rest of it. And like if you were to have, like with the Bugle. Uh, just. Well, like a Dear Abby corner.
Yeah.
You know.
The Bugle is, I think, well received.
It was.
Yeah.
It was very well. And and the thing is, is that. It's not open for debate. These, this is.
Yeah.
You know, and if you have an opinion, you're welcome to.
Right, you provide an avenue for them to reach out to you, but it's not like.
The Country Journal used to have their opinion page. Page, you know, and that. Now they they changed this so that, you know. If it's not horticultural. Or, you know, uh town related or anything like that. And I miss that because there was a lot of back and forth about. Various things that people are interested in, politics being one of them.
Well, we have a really good website. I think that, you know, we we looked at the towns that won um awards for their website and we thought maybe we'd um ask Wendy. Just check those out and see if there were any features that they had that that maybe um we could add.
She received some ARPA funding.
Yeah, she, we did. We sent her like, I think eleven, I could be wrong. I thought we sent her. I don't remember. She did some work cleaning up the site. Um, but. I think, you know, and so another question is, how do we get our site out there more and get people to be using it more?
Right.
But um, you know, we don't have funds for a communication director. Uh, but. I do think like this fire department situation is a great example of lack of communication. Or miscommunication of the, you know, the wrong information. Um, so it's definitely still an issue. Um. I don't know if social media is the answer or not.
Did, did uh. We ever find out? Is there a timeline? Once.